Good afternoon and welcome to this special meeting of Troy City Council. It is 3:45 on Monday, March 30th. This is your friendly reminder to please turn off your cell phones like I did because I've gotten caught twice in the last two meetings. I also want to make an announcement. I see a couple friendly faces out in the audience. I'm going to assume you're here for ordinance O-13 2020, which is the Parkland on Shaftesbury Road. We're going to kick this to a fourth reading. No decision on that will be made today. I only tell you that because we're going to have two executive sessions. I can't tell you how long those are going to be. So if you don't want to stick around, I completely understand. I'm trying to respect your time. We will move that to a fourth reading. I will entertain a question for one minute.
Okay. So if it has to go back to park review, I just felt that the park commissioners' meeting has been canceled for next month.
Correct.
So then it's going to go on for at least more than four reviews?
Correct. I can't speak for council, but I'm going to assume that they're not going to vote on this until they get the answers to the questions that they've asked.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will go into the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation today will be made by Mrs. Lynn Snead, and then we'll go directly into the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Dear God, we ask your blessing today on our community, our state, our nation, and our world. We ask for healing for those that are ill and peace for those that are troubled. Please be with our first responders, public employees, healthcare workers, and all those who work to protect us every day. Give all those who must make decisions during this time the ability to see clearly and discern the best way forward. Grant us all wisdom and especially grant us peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. At this time, I'll ask Mrs. Knight to please call the roll.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members are present.
Excellent. Moving on to the reading and signing of the notice of special meeting of Troy City Council. Mrs. Knight, is that something you read? Okay, Mrs. Knight, please read the notice.
Notice, a special meeting of the city council addressed to all members of council and council president. You are hereby notified there will be a special meeting of the city council of the city of Troy, Ohio, at the council chambers in said city on Monday, the 30th day of March, 2020, at 3:45 p.m. for the purpose of holding an executive session considering R-22, Resolution R-23, Resolution number R-24, Resolution R-25, Resolution R-26, Resolution R-27, O-13, O-21, O-22, and O-23. This meeting has been called by Council President West for Troy City Council 25, the council rules. I will not hand this around.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for two purposes.
So moved.
Second.
We need to state the purposes. Purposes being to confer with legal counsel regarding pending or imminent litigation and the second discussion of preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. It has been moved by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
The motion's been approved. I'm going to ask all members of the audience that are members of the public to please excuse themselves at this time. When the executive session is over, we will open council chambers back up and we'll resume with our regular meeting. Thank you. All right, we're going to return to regular session. It has been moved by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Swazer. To return to your regular session, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Excellent. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the March 16th, 2020, meeting of city council?
Minutes of council, March 16th, 2020. A presentation was made on behalf of from Lake of Ohio Committee Reports. Buildings, Streets and Sidewalks Committee recognized that legis... I'm sorry. I forgot my mic.
Yep. I did it for you. Hey, I'm your backup. I got it.
You are. I know that. Committee recommends legislation be prepared to approve the Reserve at Washington subdivision section one reclass. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended legislation be prepared approving application for ag district by sharing mumpower. Committee recommended ordinance number O-8 2020 be adopted approving an amendment to the general plan of Halifax Billings Plan Development. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared accepting recommendation of the TIRC regarding enterprise zone agreements and a tip. Recreation and Parks Committee, asset ordinance number O-13 2020 remaining committee. Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing the park board to enter into a letter of agreement regarding COVID. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing an agreement with Troy's one engineering corp. to design Riverside Drive improvement projects three and four. Committee recommended that there be a funding agreement with Dayton Power and Light Company. Resolution number R-16 2020, application of sharing mumpower for agricultural district second reading and adopted. Resolution number R-17 2020, accept recommendations of tax incentive review council for enterprise zones first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-18 2020, accept recommendation of enterprise zone tax incentive review council for tip was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R-19 2020, design project for Riverside Drive improvement phases three and four first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-20 2020, board of park commissioners have a letter of agreement with COVID was given first reading and adopted. Resolution R-21 2020, funding agreement with Dayton Power and Light first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-8 2020, general plan Halifax Billings Plan Development amended as recommended by the planning commission is given third reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-13 2020, declaring surplus property was given second reading. Ordinance number O-19 2020, accept easements for storms or drainage in the reserve at Washington subdivision. Reserve at Washington subdivision first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-20 2020, authorizing agreements with Dayton Power and Light Company to relocate lines to escape the park first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council will adjourn at 7:45 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Snead, seconded by Mr. Swazer to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
And it's approved.
Excellent. Moving on to committee reports, we have a committee of the whole report, which I'll read right now. All members of council met as a committee of the whole on March 23rd to consider legislation regarding certain emergency procedures under the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 national pandemic. This would include allowing remote meetings of council and city boards and commissions, which can be remotely accessed by the public. It is the recommendation of the committee of the whole that legislation be prepared authorizing certain procedures during the state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic with the legislation presented as an emergency measure. We further support emergency legislation canceling the April 6th meeting of the Troy City Council. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Allen, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, Mr. Swazer, Mr. Seaver, Mrs. Snead, Mr. Twilliger, and Mr. Twist. Moving on to the Buildings and Utilities Committee, Mr. Allen.
Yes, thank you. This committee met on March 23rd to consider a request for an increased authorization to rebuild Parks and Screen number two at the wastewater treatment plant. Both bids exceeded the $100,000 authorized with the low bid being $109,700. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a contract for the rebuilding of Parks and Screen number two at the wastewater treatment plant at a cost not to exceed $115,000, which includes contingency funds. So that a contract with the low bidder can be executed. Committee supports emergency legislation. This is respectfully submitted, Mr. Twilliger, Mr. Twist, and myself, Mr. Allen, Chairman of the Committee.
Are there any comments or questions on this report? Moving forward, we have a number of reports from the Finance Committee with Mr. Swazer.
Yes, sir. We have three, sir. On March 23rd, this committee met to consider authorizing the city to participate in the bid of the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for road salt. To be included, specific legislation must be enacted and presented to ODOT no later than April 24th so that ODOT is aware of the quantities to be included in their bid. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the city of Troy to participate in the ODOT cooperative purchasing program for the purchase of road salt. Based on the date established by ODOT to be included in the ODOT program, we support this item as emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Are there any questions from council members on this item? Mr. Swazer, go ahead.
Yes, sir. On March 23rd, this committee met to consider authorizing the city to offer a deferral loan program or payments to help ease the burden placed on local businesses as a result of the national pandemic of the COVID-19. The city has granted 29 loans to commercial or to local businesses. The committee concurs that a three-month extension is a way to support local businesses at this time. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the city to offer to small businesses, to small business development and community development block grants, loan holders of three-month deferrals to no later than August 1st, 2020 on loan payments of principal and interest with no compound penalties based on the borrower's request and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any required documents with the loan holders. The committee supports emergency legislation so that the deferral process can commence without delay to assist the loan holders. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Mr. Swazer, you can move on to your last item.
This committee met on March 23rd to consider establishing an employee creation incentive program. This program is an economic development incentive that would provide an additional component in the decision-making process for companies considering major investments, expansions in Troy. The program will include general guidelines. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared establishing an employee creation incentive program so that the program can be announced without delay to capitalize on potential development projects. This committee supports emergency legislation. And this again is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Any comments or questions? Moving on to the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee met on March 23rd to review proposed amendments to the codified ordinances regarding use of the public sidewalks in the downtown area, particularly related to outdoor furnishings. The proposed amendments will streamline requests and support the businesses by shortening the process without changing the criteria council has historically supported. It's a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to amend Section 717 of the codified ordinances, use of public sidewalks as discussed within this report. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Snead, and myself as chair.
Are there any comments or questions on this item? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Finally, one oral report tonight from the Personnel Committee and Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Mr. President. The oral report is that the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy be authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with Local 1638 of the International Association of Firefighters regarding agreed-upon changes to the terms and conditions of employment for the firefighters in creation of a basic firefighter position, additional support at Fire Station Three, and some lateral transfer language. And it would be for emergency measures is approved.
Excellent. And I'm going to assume that's also submitted by...
Oh, that is supported by Mr. Zach Allen and Todd Seaver, and myself as chair.
Any comments or questions on this item? Thank you, Mr. Twist. Moving on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-22 2020?
Resolution number R-22 2020, a resolution authorizing certain emergency procedures necessary for the continued coverage of the city during the current state of emergency and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading. This will also provide for remote meetings first reading.
How does council wish to move?
Wait to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Seaver to suspend the rules and seconded by Mr. Twist. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule's been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-23 2020?
Resolution number R-23 2020, resolution canceling the April 6th, 2020, meeting of Troy City Council and declaring an emergency. First reading.
How do councils members wish to act?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the rules by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mr. Swazer. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Three reading rule's been suspended. It has been moved to adopt by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-24 2020?
Resolution number R-24 2020, resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts as awarded 2020 and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading. The city must provide ODOT notice that Troy will be included in the bids by April 24th.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. How does council wish to dispose of the item?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended. How do we wish to move?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Twilliger, seconded by Mr. Rozell to adopt the resolution. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-25 2020?
Resolution number R-25 2020, resolution amending Resolution number R-7 2020, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a contract for the rebuilding of the Parks and Screen number two project at the city of Troy wastewater treatment plant, increasing the author of amount and declaring an emergency. This increases the amount to $115,000. First reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. How do we wish to move on the item?
Suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Schilling to suspend the three reading rule, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
The three reading rule's been suspended?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved to adopt by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-26 2020?
Resolution number R-26 2020, resolution deferring loan payments related to city of Troy, Ohio, community development block grant, its fall business development loans, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Council members, how do we wish to move?
Move to suspend.
It has been moved by Mrs. Snead to suspend the three reading rules.
Second. If anybody said second.
Seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
A lot of suspensions there.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Three reading rule's been suspended?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved to adopt by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last resolution for the meeting, Resolution R-27 2020?
Resolution number R-27 2020, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter a memorandum of understanding and MOU with Local 1638 of the International Association of Firefighters and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Council members, how do we wish to dispose of this item?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mrs. Snead to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule's been suspended. It has been moved by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution, seconded by Mrs. Snead. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O-13, 2020?
Ordinance number O-13, 2020, ordinance declaring municipally owned real property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such excess property. This will be the third reading.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that be moved to a fourth reading, please.
This will stand as the third reading. It will go to a fourth reading.
Mr. President, may I just ask what dates are now set for the next meetings that need to take place discussing this ordinance?
For the Park Board?
Don't we have a Parks and Rec and a Park Board that have to occur? Based on what's been requested?
We have--
It should be the second week in May, I believe. Second Tuesday in May.
The first Tuesday of May.
That's not--
But this will come up before they meet, right?
It will be April. Which is the second.
Which would have been the first Tuesday.
Seventh. They would have bound this to the seventh.
The first Tuesday.
Just canceled.
The first Tuesday of--
So it's now moved to the first Tuesday.
That's assuming the Park Board doesn't get back together between now. They just suspended their meeting.
They canceled their meeting for April.
Right, so that, but that doesn't mean they can't hold another meeting before their regular next schedule.
And that's up to the Park Board.
Right.
And then there has to be, from what we've discussed, a Parks and Recreation City Council Committee meeting, correct? After that Park Board meeting?
Correct.
Yes.
What, just a quick question? What are we hoping to get? Would it change? Is something going to change the decision that they've already made? I guess that's the question.
There may be. One of the questions that was asked of the Park Board was not only to consider the process and maybe the irregularities that occurred, but also to really clean up that property line back there. Do they want to reconsider and maybe look at a larger scope than just that one property?
Understood, but it's now being pushed out till May.
And I'm--
So what's the rush?
Yeah.
There's no rush. I'm just wondering--
I mean, I understand the question. I mean, why--
The question was if there's an idea that we're going to deal with this one property as part of many, but I just know that the one, the property owner that's been here has been here several times, and I wondered if we were going to deal with that one property.
And she, she put that basketball court in three years ago, so what's, what's the rush?
I was simply asking a question about the date.
Simply a question, Jeff.
I understand the, I understand the question, and council members are more than willing to ask questions here in this forum. We're going to move this to a fourth reading for the simple reason that the members of the Parks and Recations Committee has asked questions in their committee of the Park Board.
And as of this date?
And as of this date, there is no answer to those questions. And it does not appear that we may not get answers to those questions until at least the early part of May, so this may go on to a fifth reading and a sixth reading.
Could we vote on it now?
The rule that I have always, that I have undertaken is that if, is if the chairman of the committee in which this item falls under wishes to this go to an additional reading, I have no reason to object to that. And Mr. Schilling and I, we've been, we've had conversations about this. He wants those questions answered before a vote is taken, and I'm going to respect him in that request. This stands as the fourth reading. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O-21, 2020?
Ordinance, ordinance number O-21, 2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 717, use of public sidewalks and codified ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, first reading.
How do members wish to dispose of this item?
Move to suspend.
Second. Why are we not doing this remotely? I don't know.
Because we can--
We haven't--
Let's go through this procedure first. We'll answer that question at the end. It has been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the three-reading rule on this ordinance. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?[1450.51]